Dayton City Commission meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the place of allegiance. And this evening, the place of allegiance will be given by Commissioner Turner Sloss.
Thank you, Mayor. Dear Lord, we come to you with bowed heads. We know that you've called leaders to serve your people in their needs. Please guide us as we answer your call to lead by serving your people first. In your holy name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unreguiled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
May I have a motion then to excuse Commissioner Shaw from this evening's meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
Yes, we're probably moved and seconded that we excuse Commissioner Shaw from this evening's meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, now may I have a motion then to approve the minutes from the September 25th meeting?
So moved.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
Okay, we're probably moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the September 25th meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Ms. Blackshear, do we have any implementations or petitions?
There are none, Your Honor.
Okay, are there any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I have two, Your Honor.
Okay.
I would like to request the addition of informal resolution number 1012-24 endorsing the Five Rivers Metro Park issue on the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot to protect our metro parks for residents of Dayton and Montgomery County. And Commissioner Turner Sloss has requested that calendar item number six, which is ordinance number 32117-24 be pulled from tonight's agenda for one week for further discussion. That's all I have.
Okay, all right. So what's the calendar item again?
Number six.
Number six? Okay. So noted. So Ms. Parlett, do you have any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no additions or deletions, but I would like to highlight item number two, contract with Brunebaugh Construction. This is relative to our West Pod Police Station that is going to be constructed. We have a groundbreaking officially next week. So this will enable Brunebaugh to come into the site and begin some of the earthwork, concrete work, things of that nature for footers prior to turning into the winter. So while it should be noted that there's a 25% participation goal on this entire project, this specific portion had HRC set a 5% goal for this specific portion, and it exceeds for this portion. And I've been informed that the entire project will exceed 25% by the end of the day. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, all right, thank you. Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak on calendar items?
None on calendar items.
On calendar items, okay. Commissioners, comments on calendar items? Commissioner Turner Sloss?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to highlight and thank and commend our Planning and Neighborhood Development Department, as well as our Law Department, for the work that they have done in reference to ordinance number 32116-24. And this is pretty much amending or revising, rather, excuse me, our general ordinances concerning public nuisances. And I think that this is in line with all of the great work that's being done in reference to our housing and making the number of improvements in our neighborhoods. So again, just wanted to echo and highlight, rather, uplift, excuse me, the work of our Law Department and our Planning and Neighborhood Development Department. And then I would also like to state in regards to calendar item number six, although it is being pulled, I fully support a project labor agreement. And then I also would like to thank Commissioner Joseph for his work and my colleagues for supporting the pull of this legislation so that we can have additional conversations on how we can work towards strengthening language in the PLA. So again, I wanted to thank my colleagues, as well as the Building Trades Union. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, that's basically why we are agreeing to pull it, so we can have those additional conversations for next week.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Fairchild?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Commissioner, for those comments.
Okay. Then may I have a motion then to approve the city manager's recommendations?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second the motion, Your Honor.
Yes, we're probably moved and seconded to approve the city manager's recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Legislation, Ms. Blackshear?
First reading ordinance number 32116-24, amending sections 152.01 through 152.99 of the revised code of general ordinances concerning public nuisances. First reading ordinance number 32188-24, to vacate the southern portion of Buckeye Street at Wayne Avenue. First reading resolution number 6829-24, approving the submission of grant applications and authorizing the acceptance of grant awards from the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission under the Transportation Improvement Program. Second reading resolution number 6827-24, declaring the intention of the commission to vacate Brennan Drive from Hall Avenue to East Helena Street and Hall Avenue from Brennan Drive to North Keelby Street. Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Fairchild.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
And for the informal resolution that was added, informal resolution number 1012-24 endorsing the Five Rivers Metro Parks issue on the November 5th, 2024 general election ballot to protect our metro parks for residents of Dayton and Montgomery County.
Your Honor, I move for the immediate passage of informal resolution number 1012-24.
Second the motion.
Yes, we're probably moved and seconded to have informal resolution passed, informal resolution number 1012-24. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
That is all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, vote appointments. Commissioner Joseph?
Yes, sir. Your Honor, I move to appoint Glenda Camp, Porthea Dennis, and Howard Jordan to the Board of Housing Appeals for a term ending September 30th, 2027.
Second, Your Honor.
Yes, we're probably moved and seconded to appoint Glenda Camp, Porthea Dennis, and Howard Jordan to the Board of Housing Appeals for a term ending September 30th, 2027. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay.
Your Honor, I move to reappoint Valerie Duncan Stanley Hurdle to the Board of Housing Appeals for a term ending September 30th, 2027.
Second the motion.
Yes, we're probably moved and seconded to appoint or reappoint Valerie Duncan and Stanley Hurdle to the Board of Housing Appeals for a term ending September 30th, 2027. All in favor?
Your Honor, before we complete this vote, if I could ask for a hold on these appointments for a week?
Okay.
I'd actually ask the manager for a hold on these for a little bit more investigation, but obviously it slipped through and got on the calendar. If it's okay with my colleagues?
I'm in agreement, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner, is that for the reappointments or the appointments are both?
For these reappointments that Commissioner just read.
Okay.
Yes, just for the reappointments.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, then we'll do that. Okay, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
Yes, Your Honor. There are 13 citizens who have registered to speak. And I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address this commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you'll have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on. You'll have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you will be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, please be mindful that this is a business meeting, and we kindly ask that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand clapping, finger snapping, and conversations that will prevent the city commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium Spencer Glazer. Name and address for the record.
Hello, Spencer Glazer, 1305 Carlisle Avenue. I am here as a coalition member of Dayton United for Human Rights, also known as DUR. I have watched as they have mobilized and educated community members about Dayton becoming a human rights city and collected information from us about what it means as a community and as Dayton residents. Among some of those community recommendations have been to evaluate Dayton's community development investments, address housing concerns, mental health crisis, and other very important topics to the community's well-being. I am very disappointed in our city's decision to evaluate the Recreation Department under this $75,000 human rights assessment instead of any of the identified concerns that have been raised by the community members. Beyond that, it is deeply concerning, it is a deeply concerning trend of our city to make this decision without involvement or awareness of the community groups and individuals who have been instrumental in community education and planning on human rights issues. I stand with Dayton United for Human Rights and request that our city commission postpones the vote for, postpones the vote for the human rights assessment and allows our community to be included in these steps. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Anna Flores.
Hi, my name is Anna Flores, and I live at 9227 Great Lakes Circle. So you might recognize me. I'm back to speak on the Dayton Regional Israel Trade Alliance. For those in the audience who don't know, DITA is an economic partnership between the Dayton region and the state of Israel. Many of the contracts facilitated by DITA are between Dayton-area weapons manufacturing companies and the Israeli government. Not only that, but DITA also allows Israeli companies to establish themselves in the Dayton area so they can slap the label "Made in USA" on their products and profit off of our economy. Early next week marks one year of genocide committed by apartheid state Israel in Palestine. It marks one year of all of you witnessing the atrocities Israel has committed against the Palestinian people. Our own sister city has been attacked by the IOF and violent settlers. All of this has happened, yet for some reason, we still have a business partnership with Israel. That is because of you all who continue to remain completely fine with the fact that we have any form of partnership with a genocidal state. So originally, this message was supposed to be for our city manager Shelley Dixon, since she was the one who decided to renew the DITA contract. She isn't here today, and I've noticed you all sure like to avoid your constituents when you know you're getting called out. Shelley, if you're watching the live stream or reading the minutes, you're a coward for not showing up to this meeting. Please introduce a resolution and vote to end this contract with Israel. Your constituents do not want to be associated with a genocidal state. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Tara Campbell.
Tara Campbell, 2224 Dayton, Ohio, 45406.
Evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioner, and City Commissioners, and Madam Clerk. Dayton is recognized globally as a city of peace, an immigrant-friendly city, and a hub of innovation. With the leadership of Commissioner Shanice Turner Sloss and Matt Joseph, we are positioned to succeed in becoming the first human rights city in Ohio. Thank you both, along with the entire commission and city manager, for the commitment to this human rights movement. For the past nine months, Dayton United for Human Rights has been actively engaging with community members, local leaders, and newly formed Dayton Human Rights Alliance, which consists of 16 organizations, to gather challenges, recommendations, and questions surrounding the human rights assessment. While the current focus on the Recreation Department is appreciated, the community has identified through our discussions and other areas of urgent attention, such as housing, gun violence, mental health, resources, neighborhood stabilization, collective community engagement, and equalities. Can you tell the community how recreation was decided? What were the other options? And what does it mean to evaluate recreation? To ensure this process is inclusive of the border issues impacting our community, we ask that additional community identified priorities be integrated into the assessment. We are also requesting, we are also respectfully requesting that the vote on the assessor contract be postponed until the entire community has had an opportunity to express their concerns and contribute to this process. Dayton United for Human Rights is committed to working alongside each of you to ensure civic engagement is the center of these efforts. Transparency is fundamental to this process, and we acknowledge the challenge, the change in the language from the informal resolution to the request for proposal to have an assessment focused only on one of the city processes and not what was outlined in the resolution. As the, as the human rights resolution is refined, it's important that the public remains informed in every stage. Furthermore, we ask that the complete findings of the assessment be made available to the public with no redactions, no part of the assessment be confidential to anyone throughout this process. Mutual trust grows when both government and citizens are committed to transparency, ensuring each verse is heard and respected in shaping our community. Dayton stands at a pivotal moment with the potential to set a powerful example of human rights globally. Through your cooperation, transparency, and collaboration, we can work together to advance our city's position as a symbol of peace, equity, and justice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Maggie Burke. Name and address for the record.
Maggie Burke, 1200 Eppworth Avenue.
May I begin?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I am a very proud member of the Dayton United for Human Rights Coalition, and I am here to speak on the assessment process, because when we learned about the focus of the Recreation Department, I knew it was going to be important for me to be here and ask that you all pause on this decision. The first thing I would love you to do is come sit down at the table with us, whether it's at a community event with other partners, and we're handing out resources, or at one of our collaborative meetings. I can personally say that we polled 75 leaders within our community. Think about that reach. 75 leaders, that's not including the hundreds of people that they work with. In that dialogue, it's all motivated by care and love for our city, and it's truly a safe space. You're allowed to be empathetic and vulnerable, so I definitely urge you to listen to what we're asking you today. Please pause on this decision. Please have us at the table. We deserve that spot, and we just want to be heard. We want to make sure our community is represented. We want to make sure the community is a part of it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your comments.
Alexandra Williams.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, Alexandra, 2125 East Whip Road, Dayton, Ohio.
Okay, Alexandra.
Williams.
You may begin.
Got my address. I'm here to speak broadly over the city's mishandling of the human rights assessment. On Sunday, we found out through Shelley's assistant, Lamonte Paul, that a contract for $75,000 was decided on for the assessor to assess parks and recreation, which, in my opinion, is a blatant mockery of the work that many have done, have put in. Work that we put in because we experience human rights violations in our day-to-day lives. I can see why, instead of tackling public health, like the high mortality infant rates would be daunting, or why tackling the ways in which our economic development is enmeshed with a settler colonial project, especially when those jobs pollute our waters and our land, and they force us into complicity. Frankly, the way it stands right now, the only thing that stands in the way of us becoming a human rights city is y'all and the city manager, who is not here. You guys have all known about DITA for about a year now. Ignorance is no longer an excuse. And rather than do everything possible to disentangle us, we lean into ignorance. I saw you, Mayor Mims, and Matt Joseph at a Sierra Nevada expansion project at the base, at the airport. And, you know, those kinds of things make it very clear what kind of economic development you guys are wanting to work toward. I think that this is no longer an issue of ignorance, but instead of blatant complicity. We cannot be a human rights city for as long as our community members continue to suffer from being forced to participate in this economy that focuses on war and on military. We are experiencing our loved ones across the globe being attacked with Dayton and Montgomery County-made weapons. Your city manager, Shelley Dixon, is content to catch the flak for renewing DITA under your noses. She continues to make a mockery of us every time black or brown women come to speak. Nobody ever says anything to her. It is why she was the only one who did not offer condolences when we all came to voice our frustrations over Brian Moody. It's all connected. The fact is, we don't need to spend $75,000 to evaluate recreation when there are already so many human rights violations we're experiencing. This decision was made by the city, by your city manager, to undermine our efforts, and the only right thing to do right now is to pause it until you get robust engagement from everybody who's put in the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you for your comments.
Sharon Duggar.
Sharon Duggar, 1503 Miami Chapel Road. Good evening, Commissioners and the Mayor.
Evening.
On Monday, August 12th, around 10:22 PM, I called 911 because a few minutes before, a coward thought it was a good idea to shoot bullets through the back of my home. Terrified, I stayed on the ground, not knowing who to call. I called my neighbor across the street, who let me know the police was there. It was then I got up to try and figure out with the police what happened. They took pictures as I explained what I thought happened. I said I heard a car coming, shots fired, and it sped off. The officer asked if my camera had picked up anything, and nervously I said, no, I only saw snapshots. The officer then stated that they just left another scene where shots were fired into a home about two blocks away. Once finished, they gave me my report number. That night, I went to my sister's house because I was scared for my life. I looked through my camera video to find I had video. The next day, I called to add to my report. They said I would be contacted by a detective. When I got home from work the next day, a cart was in my door. I called to speak with the detective, and a message was left. I left several messages over the next couple of days. Approximately a week later, a 12-year-old girl fell victim to someone randomly shooting into her home while she slept and was murdered. I can't help but to think that it was the same person, because who does that? If it was her murderer, it could have possibly been prevented had mine and other cases been taken seriously. We may never know, since I haven't received any follow-up from the detective. Unfortunately, on 9/22 at 3:36 AM, I heard gunfire again. Thankfully, none of them hit my home. I looked at my camera to see again cowards firing into the lot full of trees across the street from my home. I thought to call the police again, but then thought, what would they do? Again, this past weekend, I opened Facebook to see a friend post about shots fired at the empty Walgreens on Philadelphia and Salem Avenue. Gun violence is appearing to be increasing, whether it's been reported or not. My question is, what is the Dayton Police Department and the city of Dayton going to do to make sure its residents and citizens are safe? And to add to that, the field across the street belongs to a factory. My neighbor calls continuously about that. They let overgrown trees be there that needs to be cut down, and nothing appears to be being done about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duggar.
Please stay after the meeting and make sure I have all the information. Thank you.
Hillary Lerman.
My name's Hillary Lerman. I live at 249 Wyoming Street, Dayton, Ohio, 45409.
Evening.
Okay. I want to affirm the statements made by the Dayton United for Human Rights. There's something foul about this process where things got approved without input by very strong organizations. But what I want to focus on, what really bothers me, I've been part of the Greater Dayton Peace Coalition since October 7th, and we've been trying to stop, as much as in our feeble way we can, what's going on in Gaza and the genocide there. And I was so offended when money was approved to, as I heard, beautify Dayton because NATO is coming to town. NATO is part of the assault on Gaza. NATO is part of this genocide. And I'm really offended that we would be part of giving some play to NATO. They should be run out of town for what they're doing and killing people throughout the world. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Evan Lavoy.
Evan Lavoy, 1040 Harvard Boulevard. I am the current member, the current president of Preservation Dayton, and the board members of Preservation Dayton would like to thank the city staff for developing a new ordinance to impose civil penalties on limited liability corporations that own properties with building code violations. We urge the city commission to pass this important ordinance and ensure that this initiative is fully funded with the staff and resources required for its successful implementation. We ask the city to keep this positive momentum going by also approving a vacant property registration ordinance as soon as possible. As you know, Preservation Dayton has researched and advocated for the passage of a vacant property registration ordinance beginning in late 2022. Impactful vacant property ordinances have helped cities throughout Ohio offset costs caused by vacant properties. And it has also increased housing supply and revitalized neighborhoods in cities throughout Ohio. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lavoy.
Thank you for your comments.
Yusuf Alzain.
Good evening. Yusuf Alzain, 4906 Amberwood Drive, Dayton, Ohio. Throughout history, many empires have risen and fallen due to a variety of factors such as military defeat, economic decline, internal strife, and external pressures. I'm getting very concerned that our nation is heading in that direction, regardless of the age of the empire. Many of them since 3rd century AD survived 600, 700 years, but then they got the demise that they deserve. Fast forward to the 20th century and the emergence of modern genocides, events that had devastated impacts, devastating impacts on populations around the world. What is genocide, you ask? Genocide is an atrocity that results in immense suffering and loss of life, and it fundamentally undermines human rights, that's why we're talking about here, and dignity. It's a violation of moral and ethical principles, and its impact can reverberate through generations. Addressing and preventing genocide is crucial for fostering a more just and humane world. It's essential to promote awareness, education, and accountability to ensure that such horrors are not repeated, but we forget history. Genocide and the suffering it caused can be difficult to comprehend. It's a tragic reminder of humanity's capacity for both cruelty and resilience, and that's what we see in Gaza and Lebanon right now. Sometimes, just acknowledging the sorrow and discussing it... Sometimes, just acknowledging the sorrow and discussing it can be a step forward towards healing and understanding. And unfortunately, we are one-sided. We cannot talk to anybody. Here are some significant cases along their human tolls. I'm not going to go through them, but the reason I'm going to mention it is very critical. Holocaust, 1941, 1945, approximately 6 million Jews were murdered. Rwanda and genocide, Bosnia and genocide, therefore Yazidis genocide, Marine Mar and many to mention. These genocide illustrate the ongoing need for vigilance, prevention, and accountability to ensure that such atrocities are not repeated in the future. Each case represent not just a loss of life, but a deep social and cultural scars that can last for generations. I want you to take out your religion, your political affiliation, and think as a human being. What is the kid, the child that is now homeless, the child without an eye, the child without an arm? What are they going to think about in 75 years? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alzain.
Thank you for your comments.
Charlene Bayless, 2422 Patterson Boulevard, 45409.
Evening.
All you who so capably serve about making Dayton, Ohio a human rights city. The Dayton City Commission undergirds economics over humanity. The City of Dayton does not think ahead regarding human needs. Regarding the basic matter of health, in 2018, the commission could have been in support of saving Good Samaritan Hospital, one that served the underserved, for manageable cost. Good Samaritan Hospital was destroyed and replaced by a YMCA. And recently, regarding a proposed Dayton Public Hospital, the city paid Wolfheart Consulting for us all to learn that the cost of operating a public hospital for a year would be more than the City of Dayton entire budget. There is a current journey to bring human rights standards to the City of Dayton, which would also benefit the Greater Dayton region. Critical is the involvement of community in the process. The Dayton United for Human Rights is shut out. An informal current city resolution for the assessment of City of Dayton departments needs reworking with the community participating in the process. The assessment is a matter of public interest. Transparency is key to building trust between the city and its citizens. Mayor, commission, city manager in absentia, make it happen. We would thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bayless.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Alex Gorman. I live at 133 Linden Avenue, Dayton, Ohio.
Evening.
Good evening. So I am here to affirm the recommendations of the Dayton United for Human Rights Coalition, an organization that I have been massively, massively impressed by over the last several I've seen them bring together some of the people of the city to discuss their, you know, the real situation in our community in ways that are unmatched. I'd also like to speak on the question of genocide and the Dayton Regional Israel Trade Alliance, and repeat the call for a moratorium as quickly as possible. As we're well aware, the Dayton region is home to a $16 billion economic engine, which is tragically linked to the war machine and the military industrial complex. Unfortunately, militaries don't produce, they consume and destroy without, as we've seen over the last few weeks and over the last year in Gaza and Lebanon, what that looks like. The vast majority of the arms are supplied by the United States. And given its role in logistics, the Air Force Base is likely shipping most of them out. That makes us particularly responsible. It is even more distressing to observe a city where economic inequality is massively visible constantly, where there are a lack of youth services, where we have a chronic shortage of teachers, where we have a lack of mental health services, where there's poverty, incarceration, mass incarceration, addiction, gun violence, and so on. And I'm not saying these things to blame, but to ask, how is it that we have the most massively funded institution probably in the history of the world, which is the United States military industrial complex, residing alongside such massive inequality? What, like, if this is an engine for economic development, where is the human development? Where is the human development? Like, if there are costs that people make in economic decision-making, I understand that. I expect that our city be served, that we have services, that we not have roads that, you know, are dangerous, and so on, right? That's why we're, you know, calling for this.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you very much, and...
Thank you, Ms. Dugger.
Good evening. Greg West, 1323 Kensington Avenue, Dayton, Ohio 45406.
Good evening.
Before I get into the flyer that we have, I wanted to thank you guys first for pulling that agenda off, I mean, that item off the agenda, because this is a prime example of why we need to look at that project labor agreement number again. 1.7 million is way below the number that you guys are proposing for a project labor agreement that would still freeze the unions out of, you know what I'm saying, being able to get quality people from our community on these job sites. So I thank you for pulling that for further discussion. Now, what I do want to discuss is right here on our second annual fishing day again. We have the updated flyer. I know the last week, the flyer that I had on it had some messed up information, so we updated it, got it together. We're looking for support. If you have any youth that would like to come out and learn the joys of fishing, please get with me. Our information is on the bottom of the flyer. You can email us, and we'll reach out to you. Last year, we serviced over 30 youth. This year, we're trying to up the numbers to at least 50. That's our goal. Looking for donations. If you would like to donate time, money, fishing equipment, bait, anything like that, please come on out, help us. Because we're looking for ways to help this mental health crisis that we have with our youth, as well as giving them some good entertainment and recreational things to do, and match them up with mentors to teach them that, you know, everything does not have to be all doom and gloom like what, you know, the media and everything else likes to show what our community is. There's a lot of good things that happen in Dayton, but it seems like it never gets mentioned. So this is one of these events that we'd like to get out there to the public to start getting, you know, that feel-good feeling back into our communities. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Julio Mateo, 215 Ice Avenue, Unit 400. Mayor, Commissioners, Deputy City Manager, Mad Clerk. I did not prepare any remarks today, as I usually do, and in part is because I feel like ultimately, at most, I hear from one-third of this commission about the remarks, and I wanted to try a different approach. I am here in support of Dayton United for Human Rights. I am here to support holding the contract until the commission and the city manager and whoever else is involved in the process listens to the community and to the input for about human rights from community members that Dayton United for Human Rights has helped, like, collect. I, yeah, I think, I want to take this opportunity, since I have time, and I don't want to repeat everything that has been said, I just wholeheartedly support all the statements that have been said before. And I use the two minutes that I have to just give an opportunity to the Commissioners that typically don't respond to the comments, to maybe say something about what we're asking about. If Mayor Mims, if you can say something about, like, you know, what's going on before we get to the end, and then we don't have time and we don't hear from you.
That's our policy, let you speak.
Excuse me?
It's our policy to let a citizen speak.
Yeah, I'm just considering my time, if you would like to say something about this topic.
No, thank you.
Or about your position on human rights, or anything like that.
I just share with you what our policy is.
All right. Well, I just wanted to provide an opportunity for that before the end of the comments. Hopefully, at the end, it will be addressed by your comments at the end. But that, all I wanted to say is that please hold the contract until Dayton United for Human Rights and the community input that has been collected is heard. Creating a human rights, declaring Dayton a human rights city, an important component is participation in government, participatory democracy. And I think I would wait to show that you are truly committed to human rights, truly committed to protecting the human rights of your constituents, is to actually show that you care about participation in government, that you want to provide those opportunities. And then when community members meet, even if you didn't set the table, that you are willing to listen to their input about, you know, the human rights violations they experience and how they would like to be served by the government. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
That is all, Your Honor.
Okay. Ms. Paulette, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Ms. Blackshaw, any closing comments?
I have none, Your Honor.
Okay. Commissioner Charles Lawson, any closing comments? Mistress?
Yes. I just would like to thank all of the staff, the entire commission office, as well as the mayor for holding, I believe this is, what, the third or the fourth annual youth summit that took place?
Third.
Third. Third annual youth summit, which was very successful. And then I would also like to encourage anyone who is experiencing debris, branches that may be left out on the road, whatever have you, to please call our Public Works Department, which is 937-333-4800, for additional assistance as we start the cleanup in our communities. Thank you, Mr. Spencer Glazer, for your comments. Ms. Anna, thank you for your comments and your continued leadership. Ms. Campbell, thank you for your leadership, and all of those who are involved with the Dayton United for Human Rights. This has been a long journey, but again, the work that you all are doing is commendable, and please keep at it. With that, too, Mr. Paulette, if we could address some of the concerns, because I'm curious as to, I don't know if there is any accuracy in us reviewing recreation and youth services as that initial point for the assessment, but if we could have a follow-up, because from my understanding, we've already completed and conducted a recreation and youth services, I believe it was '22, the year of '22. So if we could have a follow-up to that, as well as where are we in the RFP process? And if that is supposed to be, if we are now at the, in the stage, if you will, of awarding the contract, then I think we all should know, again, where we are in that process. And then finally, as mentioned in the comments, if we could get a full report of the assessment once we get to that point of awarding the RFP, again, without it being sanitized, without it being scrubbed, we would like to see the full assessment once the area is identified for the human rights assessment. And again, we've already put the provisions in place with our appropriations for 2025 for the dollar amount of $75,000. And if we could just follow up with that work. And I just want to thank my colleagues, as well as Commissioner Joseph for all the work that he's done and us working together on this, as well as Commissioner Fairchild and the entire commission, the mayor and Commissioner Shaw in their support.
Yes, a normal part of our process.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for reaffirming. Ms. Burke, thank you for your leadership. Ms. Williams, for your comments. Ms. Dugger, if you could, I'm glad that you are still here. If you wouldn't mind providing that additional information to us, as mentioned, as the mayor has already stated. And then, Mr. Paulette, if we could get a follow-up to Ms. Dugger and that report that she filed on August 12th of the incident that took place at her home. I'm sorry that you had that experience. We are, in fact, seeing an increase of those various situations that are occurring around gun violence, and know that we are working very hard. We're identifying a number of programs. We're identifying a number of resources that we need to deploy to address those issues in our community regarding the gun violence that we're seeing. Mr. Lehman, thank you for your support. Mr. Lavore, thank you very much for highlighting the legislation that will be before us in regards to the civil penalties. And thank you for the work that PDI is doing. And in terms of the vacant properties registry, I believe we have that language that we've all reviewed before. And then, again, Mr. Paulette, if you could have an update as to where we are in the vacant properties registry, and if, in fact, that's something that we're looking at with our housing framework that we were able to pass back in '23 last year. Mr. Alzain, thank you for your continuous reminder of what we're dealing with, the gruesome details of the atrocities that are taking place overseas. But again, thank you. Thank you for your continued advocacy. Ms. Bayless, thank you for your comments. Mr. Gooman, thank you for your comments. Mr. West, thank you for your leadership and all that you're doing with the Building Trades Union, as well as highlighting the Second Annual Fishing Youth Day, which is, in fact, on October 20th at Lakeview Lake, and it is from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. For more information, please contact felonswiththefuture.org, and they will be happy to provide you with all of the information necessary. And I would assume that they will go through that website to register for the event as well. So thank you. And my plan is to attend as well with my young ones. Mr. Mateo, thank you very much for your continued leadership and for your comments this evening. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Fairchild.
Yeah, and Commissioner Charles Lawson, thank you for all those comments. I would just iterate on the human rights assessment. If you could get some clarification for that, what I heard tonight doesn't match up with what we, what I understood we said we were going to do. And so I want to make sure our words, our actions match up with our words. So I look forward to that. And thank you, colleagues, for pulling that PLA and taking a second look at that, and hopefully we make it perfected a little bit. That would be great. This weekend, encourage folks, there's the outdoor experience out at Eastwood Park. If you've never gone to it, you can try out a whole host of outdoor activities. And so that's, we're supporting five, or the Metro Parks, and Metro Parks is hosting that. So encourage you to go out and take advantage of that. Last day to register is Monday, so I encourage you to go on and look at your registration, make sure you are registered correctly, check with your friends, families, neighbors, and even strangers on the street, make sure that they are registered. I was on a call with someone, and a person who's lived in their house for 35 years had voted from that house, from that, and checked their registration, and there was something pending. And so they had to go and sort that out. So don't assume that you're registered. Take the minute it takes to go to the Ohio Secretary of State's website and look up your registration, and make sure you're registered by Monday. For our Jewish neighbors, want to wish you a Happy New Year, Happy Jewish New Year, which starts tonight. I don't know if you can see three stars yet, but as soon as you can see three stars, the New Year has begun. And if you've never participated in the Dayton Literary Peace Awards in any capacity, there's lectures on Saturday, the gala on Sunday, the winners and runner-ups for fiction and nonfiction were just announced. The books look really compelling. They're hard reads, but they're important reads. And also, the lifetime has been given to President Jimmy Carter. And they, I'm glad they made the exception, because they usually require attendance. And so they have given him an exception that he didn't have to travel to Dayton. And so, and a happy belated 100th birthday for President Carter. And so, and a happy belated 100th birthday for President Carter. And I think that, you know, given what's going on in the world, that the Literary Peace Award is a glimpse of hope in examining the harsh realities in our world and encouraging and inspire us to be better and to offer hope and light, so.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Joseph.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Two things. First, thank you for bringing up the importance of checking voter registration. Our state government has shown no shame in kicking people out for whatever reason, and I'm assuming in some cases are throwing the baby out with the bathwater. So please check your registrations. Make sure you're registered. Tomorrow's the day to do it, tomorrow, Friday. So please, please do. You can check online. You can go in person to the Board of Elections office. There are many ways that you can probably call over there, too. Second, I want to thank Reverend Vanessa Ward. I had a tour of the Hope Center today, hadn't been over there in a while, and it is really impressive, the layered work they do with a number of partners, with the neighborhoods. It's grown so much these last couple of years. It was an eye-opening visit, and I really want to thank them for taking the time to give me a tour, and thank them for their hard work. That's all for today. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Yeah, I participated in a march that they had last week, or week before last, I'm not sure which one, but very enlightening and tremendous amount of participation from the community, as well as the young people who signed there as well. So my colleagues have said so much. There's not much left for me to say, but to thank all of you who have been here and made your comments, we very much appreciate that, and we'll take all your thoughts and concerns into consideration. So with that, love and peace for all, hatred for none. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.